Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And Obama.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed.
I think that's it. That was like the first week.
All right, again, we are at the June 21 Village Woodbury Planning Board meeting. As the board had a chance to review the minutes from 6:07 that were presented.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll offer a motion to accept those minutes. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. All right. First items are administrative business. Fisher submitted a check to the building department late this morning, so they have brought their escrow up to date. Skytop Road LLC ARB, ARB Ridge Preservation, Water Quality Protection Overlay of Demo and Reconstruction of a Single Family Dwelling. Said property is located at 18 Skytop Road in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 217, Block 3, Lot 7. After repeated attempts from the building department, the application still remains in a negative escrow for an extended period of time. Village Code allows this board to close and deny any application that fails to replenish escrow in a timely fashion. So I'm going to offer a motion to deny Skytop Road LLC/ARB for the failure to replenish escrow.
One second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Onto our regular agenda. Shops at Woodbury's ARB. Review draft decision for pylon sign located at approved mixed-use commercial center. Said property is located at intersection of Losley Lane and Route 32 in Central Valley and is known on the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 225, Block 1, Lot 34 dot 1, 34 dot 2, 2, and 75. For once, you actually don't have to get up and give a spiel.
Yes.
Okay. So, several pages of faction findings on June 21, 2023. The planning board refer you from the secret consistency finding for this application. Do I have to? I don't have to do one page four, right, Kelly?
No, I'll summarize that page four includes a finding related to Village Code, Section 310 dash 30C1E, and repeats that. And on June 21, 2023, the planning board modified the restriction on the number of colors permitted on the multi-tenant directory sign, finding that additional colors proposed would not be distracting to drivers. Additionally, the current tenant signage proposed, i.e. McDonald's, Starbucks, coffee, Courtyard Marriott, ask the dental, Interpol, and Mexican Grill, consists of logos for those businesses, so the sign does not contain more than two type faces and complies with Village Code.
Thank you very much. And again, this application is exempt from the current moratorium due to exemptions number five and six. After, add fun legal language, we get into specific conditions. All conditions of prior approvals and connections with this property shall continue to be in full force and effect, and this resolution does not supersede or otherwise modify such prior approvals and conditions, except as specifically set forth in this resolution. No building permit shall be issued authorizing construction of structures inconsistent with the architectural rendering submitted to and approved by the Architectural Review Board as part of this approval, nor shall any certificate of occupancy issued for any structures constructed except in conformance with such renderings. Any deviations from such renderings will require the further planning board review. Prior to the signing of the renderings, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated June 2, 2023, to the satisfaction of the village engineer. To maintain compliance with the decision of the Village Zoning Board of Appeals, the sign must maintain identical messages on each side of the sign. I'll offer the motion to accept the draft resolution of approval. Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Have a good night, sir.
Thank you.
Next item. Woodbury Villa is considered amended resolution of previously approved site plan and ARB of community building and parking lot within the Woodbury Villa subdivision. Said property is located at 4 Central Valley Line and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Map, Section 254, Block 4, Lot 2. I don't think there's... Oh, okay, you're here. Okay. So this is a motion that we previously, or the application that we previously had approved. The applicant has come back before us tonight. They are still in the process of procuring the necessary easements for their project. One of those easements, they have to get from the town. That easement is subject to a 20-day referendum. So what this modification to the approval that we already gave is to allow them to start construction, so they don't miss the construction window, so they can start the foundation work, but no COs will be issued for the use of the building until they successfully get all of the easements that are required. And there's, I think it's three or four of them. Right. All right. And it's basically, this is going to be buyer beware. They're going to now proceed going forward without the necessary easements. So if there's, for some reason, they can't get the easements, they either gotta tear it down, move it, or they won't get the CO, they can't occupy the building. So they are now...
Do they leave it in a half-built condition?
Um, no, they would have to finish the building, right? It just couldn't be occupied.
Yeah, I think that they're not going to have an issue getting the easements. However, if they do, they can just come back to this board and maybe relocate the pipes or something like that, so that they don't need to...
Okay.
And they cost them more money, or they'd be more engineering capable, but there's options there.
There's options.
Yeah. But it's on them now, at this point. So they're proceeding at their own risk. Okay. All those stuff in red, right?
Yeah, you don't have to read them all if you don't want to miss them. They're all the same as the last one, except for number four.
Okay. So how about we go to the specific conditions that we're modifying the resolution with? I presume your office has a copy of this already?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So specific condition four. Prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall comply with the memorandum of the village engineer dated October 13, 2022, and revise the plans as needed to the satisfaction of the village engineer. Prior to the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, the easements referenced in said memorandum of the village engineer and as determined necessary by the planning board attorney shall be drafted to the satisfaction of the planning board attorney, obtained as needed, and filed with the county clerk's office. Proof of such filing shall be provided to the building department prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. If the occupant is unable to obtain the required easements, the applicant shall return to the planning board for relocation of the infrastructure as needed. I'll offer a motion to accept the amended draft resolution or resolution of approval. Second, any questions? All in favor? Aye. Just a note, we are still waiting for plans to be signed and sealed by an engineer.
Yeah, we were waiting on that. It's been over a long time.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now this is where the wheels fall off. Next item. Avalon Hotel. Review status of project for proposed four-story, 130-room hotel at 94 Turner Road in Central Valley. Said property is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, Section 226, Block 1, Lot 5, and 6 dot 2. Good evening, sir. I think the last time we saw you, you were behind the screen, right?
Behind the screen. I don't think I had anyone here.
Not I, they don't need to see me. They see enough of me.
We just lob spitballs at her when we need her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We get to the sound of it.
It used to be softball, but she got upset when I hit her with one of those, so.
Less accuracy. Good evening, everyone. John Queenen with Lang and Tully Engineering here for the applicant. Also with me tonight is Kristi Adana from Silverberg and Zalantis, counsel of the applicant, and the applicant, Paul Olivera, from Avalon Building Systems. We're for you with a project that has been around for quite some time now, floating in the weeds, or however you want to say it. We last gave you an update last year when we were before the DOT, talking about access. We finally have come to a conclusion with the DOT, I believe, in conceptual value. I don't have any more kidneys left to give them, so we finally did get a letter from them. Basically, how it works out, and I'll go right into the traffic aspect of it. They are willing to permit us for a driveway on Oakland Avenue, as shown on the site plan. That would be full access from our side, left-turn restricted access from 32, so you wouldn't be able to make any left turns into the site at that driveway, at that location. Also tied with this would be improvements to Turner Road intersection, which the other hotel site also has to do, and it's whoever needs it first is how it's being set up. So the way I understand, the way the DOT would like it, our plan set will also incorporate an identical design of the Turner Road reconfiguration, as well as the left-turn lane there. And the other applicant, the Marriott Hotel, or whatever it is right now, would also have an identical plan set attached to their plans for that access also. And it's whoever wins the race.
I was gonna say whoever gets the shovel on the ground first is gonna be the one that has to build it?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. And that's how it's been set up with the DOT. We haven't really done much on the site plan design, because we've been working with the state. So this is probably our first real submission back to the board with regards to that. I can go through the plan again if you want a brush-up on some history, or we can get right into some of the consultant comments that I'd like to just go over with the board. I think mainly tonight, we'd like to try to discuss with the board, setting up a secret process, and how the board would like to take that forward.
Does the board need a refresher on the project, or are we still... You're good? Okay. Have your answer.
Okay.
You want me to go to our consultants first, and then, or...
Yeah, well, the main comment that I'd like to touch upon is in Natalie's memo regarding the zoning. So if you recall, we're doing a lot-line change or a two-lot subdivision, however the board wants to deem that. The front parcel is the martial arts studio.
Right.
Under the code, the definition for personal service use, it lists martial arts studio use. So that's what's on the plan for zoning. So that parcel is under that zoning, and obviously, the hotel is under the hotel overlay zoning. So as the plan is proposed right now, it complies with the zoning. There's no additional variances needed. Project received its variance for the access going out to Turner Road probably three, four years ago at this point. So that was our main concern, is we feel that we meet the zoning. The definition of personal service includes martial arts use. It's not commercial recreation. We just wanted to clarify that.
Natalie?
Thank you. That's okay. It is kind of funny, though, talking to you through the board, so. No, I appreciate the update that John just provided, and just to touch on that zoning issue, I believe the plans for this martial arts, the martial arts site plan building plan was originally approved as a commercial recreation use. So I think we'll have to look into that a little bit further and see, you know, if the zoning has changed since then, and ask Mike for an opinion on what this would actually be classified as. So, you know, unless Kelly has any different recommendations, I think that's how we'll proceed with that. You know, so that's the first issue, and I think that that was kind of a threshold issue for this application. If they did require a variance, basically, they would not comply with the lot area requirements for commercial recreation use. Our memo notes that the deductions for lot area should include utility easements. It's not clear if there are any on this property at this time, so the applicant should update the plans to reflect either, a, that there are none, or b, the appropriate deductions. The second sort of threshold issue, which I think that the applicant could probably modify their plan to comply, is that for the hotel zoning, there's a 15-foot landscaped buffer required around all property lines. So we did reach out to the building inspector for an opinion on whether or not fences and retaining walls could be permitted within that 15-foot setback, and he's appined that they are structures and not permitted. So that'll need to be adjusted on a future plan from the applicant and/or a variance needed for that issue. Let's see. Associated with the building height for the hotel, as you know, there are code requirements for rooftop equipment based on how much area they occupy on the roof and how far they are setback from the building edge. So at the appropriate time, the applicant should provide that information for you to confirm compliance with the building height requirements of the code. The applicant is requesting a waiver for the required parking on the site. It's 14.7% request deduction. As you know, the code permits the planning board up to 25% reduction in parking if you find that a use or combination of uses on a single lot would generate less parking than the use would require per zoning. So we kind of defer to colliers on any particular comments that they have on that issue. The other thing that I think is important to kind of bring before the board and before the applicant is, the ZBA decision appears to require the bus parking be located on the front parcel of the hotel property. Right now, it's located on the rear parcel, so we've recommended, you know, that the board consider whether or not the plan as it is complies with the ZBA's decision, and maybe look for some guidance from Kelly, if she knows what the plan before the ZBA included at that time on that issue. Won't go too much into the traffic comments that we had in our memo, because I think some of them are repeated from colliers, and also, you know, ultimately, we defer to them. But there should be an easement associated with the UMAC parcel on the applicant's driveway that they're proposing opposite Oakland, just to allow... I call it the UMAC parcel, it's the martial arts parcel. I hope nobody gets confused when I say that, so that they can have that access in perpetuity, since they're basically eliminating their direct access to 32 and now have to access the driveway for the hotel. Let's see. We've asked for turning movements for fire trucks coming from the north. Basically, that would have to enter via left-hand turn at the Turner Road and Route 32 intersection, so that should be provided. We've also noted that there is a small parking area located on the front parcel for the hotel. There isn't any pedestrian facilities right now, as far as like sidewalk or crosswalk shown on the plans, basically to cross Turner Road. So that's something that the board can consider, you know, just basically allowing that movement of, so that people can, from the hotel, could access that parking lot. Sorry. A projected water and sewer demand form is required for the project. We do have some minor comments on the water and sewer connections proposed, which we assume the applicant will be able to comply. This applicant, or application, is subject to the moratorium. The SWIP remains to be provided. We've asked for the floodplain limits to be shown on the plan. If there's any disturbance to the floodplains, then the applicant will be required to file for a floodplain development permit. Site lighting should be limited to 0.1-foot candles at the property line, which is per your typical requirements. We've asked the applicant to confirm compliance with the landscaping and screening requirements of the code. Loading dock area should be noted on the plan. And I think that recently, the planning board provided comments to the village board on discretion with loading docks and how many should be required per code. I'm not sure if that was adopted already, but that's something for the applicant to know. Right now, there's none shown on the plan, so they'll have to review that with you at the appropriate time. A pylon sign is proposed. The details of that should be provided for you to consider. The applicant is proposing to dedicate a portion of their property along Turner Road to the Village of Woodbury. As you know, acceptance of that is at the discretion of the Village Board of Justiz. Nonetheless, the meets and bounds description is required for that and the subdivision, which kind of leads me to my next comment about whether or not this actually would be constituted a minor subdivision under the code or just a lot-line adjustment. So we've asked, or kind of recommended in our memo that you review that with Kelly, you know, if she has any opinions on that. It's not very clear to us under the code. And then, there are wetlands existing on the site, so they are regulated by the DEC, as well as the Army Corps of Engineers, and also under your local zoning codes, so the applicant should review Chapter 165 and provide any information that you need to consider. And then, again, John said that they wanted to advance seeker, so we have provided comments on the EAF Part 1 that was provided previously, not necessarily with the submission. So I think once those comments are addressed, the board would want to consider having Kelly draft a FEAF Part 2. That's all I have.
You sure?
Ah, you know, I don't know. You want me to keep going? I'm sure there's a couple I missed.
Questions for Natalie? So Kelly, I remember when they were in front of the ZBA, and now it's been two, three years at this point.
I think it's taken longer.
The little parking lot in the front, if I remember correctly, was supposed to be used for the buses, and isn't that how it was presented to the ZBA?
I think so, but I don't have that plan. I was trying to find it on my laptop, so.
At the time, yes, it was presented. The buses were out there along with that parking lot for basically employee parking. That was the thought.
Right.
And then, there were comments received that could we move the bus parking somewhere else, so that it wouldn't be visible driving down 32?
I mean, I don't disagree with those comments, but I don't know how it plays with how, when the ZBA rendered their decision.
Yeah, I don't...
I'll take a look at the plan that was, I'll pull it from the building department, take a look at the plan that was presented in front of the ZBA, and see what the ZBA decision actually said in regards to that.
We'll see who wrote that one, right?
It wasn't me. I have no idea. I know, I wasn't there. It's been that long?
Yeah, might have been...
Oh, wow, that was...
Mr. Dickover, Bob Dickover.
Was it Rob, or was it Lisa?
No, I think it was Dickover.
Yeah, I think it was Rob.
Wow, it's been that long? It's been that long?
Yes.
We got our approval early March, right in 2020, right before everything shut down.
Okay.
The zoning board was like one of the last person meeting. Kristi Adana, Chris Rogers. The issue before the zoning board was whether the lots separated by Turner Road could be considered one lot if they were merged.
Right.
And then, whether that could be considered frontage by having the frontage on Route 32. And we did receive a favorable interpretation. It wasn't actually a variance. The zoning board's interpretation was in our favor, based upon the case law, that that merger could happen and consider the lots, once the portion of the parcel is separated from the martial arts studio. It would be one lot with the adequate frontage. So I think that was really the focus of the zoning board's determination at the time.
No, I remember it now, because this is all about access, because the hotel needed access from a state or a state road in order to be there.
I just don't know if it referred specifically to anything on the decision, and I would like to check.
No, no, I'm not holding anybody to anything right now.
I was hoping that I had it, and then I was like, oh my gosh, when did this actually happen? And I don't have those, so I'll have to get it from her.
Okay.
Or John.
I think I have it, too. I can send you.
Everybody has it on me.
I think I have it in my file cabinet at home, too, but...
Sure, I do. It's probably ready for somewhere.
If I, sorry, if I could just ask one additional question of Natalie. You said the building inspector had made a determination regarding the setbacks and what would be considered structures that would be permitted, and you said he had made a determination. Is that in writing?
Yes.
Can we get a copy of that?
Sure.
If we don't have it already?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
It's an email, no problem.
And I know you want to move secret along, and I can tell you, from the neighboring hotel, we're in their, in their draft EIS right now, so I am going to say, prepare yourself, that is where we're going to end up as well.
That is correct. I was going, you know me, I'm blunt. I was going to ask just that question.
Yes.
If that's where we're heading, then we will revise the EAF per the comments that we've received, and we will begin to prepare a draft scoping document for the consultants and the board's review, unless...
And the sooner that you can send in the EAF Part 1 revised, the sooner I can start working on the FEAF Part 2.
Two.
Get you the draft of what's going in there, for you to...
You want, you're gonna, you want to do the scope draft?
No. I want to do the Part 2.
She'll do the Part 2, and then after we...
We'll do the scope.
Yeah, so after we accept the Part 2, then...
Yeah, but you have samples of what this board has approved previously, and if you need one for the neighboring hotels, we can send you.
It's gonna be almost, I would imagine it's gonna be almost identical, maybe some slight tweaks here or there, but...
I've already gone through the one for the neighboring applicant, and pretty much identical, maybe some tweaks here or there, but nothing.
So I mean, that would just, that's what I say, I would prepare yourself, that's where the road you're gonna go down.
Okay. Just to backtrack one thing, I did look at that buffer. I can move the walls out of the buffer, so we should be able to accommodate that.
That's the landscaping buffer?
Yeah.
Correct.
So the retaining walls are out? Well, no, the retaining walls will still be there, but they won't be...
They won't be in that 15.
In that 15.
15-foot buffer.
And then, on the traffic, we did supply, I think, and I'll unearth it, there was a report basically going through the waiver requests for the reduction of the parking and why. It was associated with this hotel not having a conference center, not having like meeting rooms, and also providing the spaces for the buses.
Right.
So I can get that back to the board, and that can be included in, obviously, in our EIS.
And I remember when you guys were here a few years ago, the initial concept was that they were gonna be bringing buses up from the city, dropping off at the commons, parking the buses, and...
Correct.
And that's still the same?
It's still the same general plan, yes.
Okay. Very good.
So it's not gonna be overnight parking for the buses, they're just...
They're not supposed to stay overnight, right? There's supposed to be a day trip thing.
It's a day trip, or they will stay overnight. We have provided spaces solely for buses.
I think it's why we got to find out how the ZBA's decision ties in, because if it's gonna be an overnight thing, you would want...
In the back.
In the back.
Yeah, you know, Kelly will research it, but I think the ZBA was more focused on if the access plan changed, and I think they referenced that plan, so that if the driveway were to move, or there was some change in that layout, that we'd have to go back.
No, not that I don't believe you, but if I don't want to tick the attorneys off, because then they yell at me.
No, no, she will be very thorough.
I get in trouble.
She will do her job.
Say it again, and like, how's the whole...
It's very tough.
She'll call me with the bad news.
Very, very, very tough.
Just one question. So we're talking about the revised EAF Part 1, so that the EAF Part 2 can be prepared, but I heard mention, we're gonna submit revised plans, and I thought maybe at this point, you might just want the revised EAF, so that they can move forward with just that? But...
No, we need it.
I just, I'm just thinking of an entire new review on those plans. Would it be truthful at that point?
Well, the only changes to the plans I'm hearing should be the movement of the buffer, of the, sorry, the retaining walls out of the buffer. And we do have to refer to ESO, because I think when I looked at some of the plans, some of the, in my opinion, some of the turns are tight for a ladder truck, so there may be some either currage work or parking work, but I don't want to steal Dr. Phil's stumpers, so let's go with, let's go to him.
Okay, so Mr. Queenen addressed one of my biggest comments. I had about half a dozen comments at this point. So the coordination of the two projects relative to the treatment at Turner Road, DOT reviewed, you know, each application and made sure how they would function. So I think, you know, we were looking for a commitment that if the other hotel doesn't go ahead, or whoever's first, especially with the conditions that DOT has placed on it, which are no left turns at the new connecting road opposite Oakland, and that they would occur in turn. So he's addressed that, and that would carry forward in the EAF or EIS where we go. In terms of the, we have some comments on the details on the plan. One of the other items that DOT indicated is that they will not allow signalization at this time, because it doesn't meet their warrants. So it's important that in the documentation going forward, that there's an agreement to monitor that, you know, after opening, if there's a change in circumstances, because one of the issues in both this traffic study and the other traffic study was the difficulty of making left turns out on the Route 32. So I think that's, you know, just something that you're gonna have to consider as you move forward. In terms of traffic in the scope for the other hotel, they were going to be doing a simulation of traffic along the corridor, so I would just coordinate, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel. I think your consultant already knows that. With respect to the connector road, we had previously recommended to at least provide an easement area for connection to the south, to the mobile parcel, because if anything ever gets redeveloped there, it would make sense to combine and get traffic to access out at Oakland, especially if there's a possibility that there could be a signal there in the future. Their plans also show the relocation of the existing crosswalk on 32, and I assume that DOT, they didn't comment on that, but I'm assuming that DOT was in agreement with that, so we'll want to see, you know, some correspondence to that, and there's some details relative to the treatment at that point. Uh, one other item that I think, you know, the ESOs have to review these plans, I mean, especially with any of their newer equipment, I know it was reviewed early on, but there's been some changes. Uh, one other thing that you should take a look at, John, with the reconfiguration of Turner Drive, so the road on the west side of the martial arts is an exit roadway, it comes out in very close proximity where there's going to be more activity at the reconstructed Turner Road 32, whether or not that should be made an entry or slip direction to get exiting traffic away from the intersection. So anybody coming from the north would be able to make that left and then, you know, enter the property rather than trying to get them to exit. Also, just to make sure all the coordination of any work along Turner Road with the adjacent hotel is, is done. Natalie addressed the easement for martial arts, there's some other, you know, details in, in that area, um, but I think it's important to, um, have a, a quality post opening type of evaluation if warrants would be met for signalization because I think that would be very critical to, uh, traffic flow exiting from the property. And I think those are the key items, June 16th letter, uh, pretty much summarizes each of these items. Yeah, and the rest were just some details on crosswalks and ADA ramps and I think that's pretty much it.
The, the no, the no left turn on 32 from opposite of Oakland.
Yes.
I mean, the intersection is designed because it's supposed to, it allows the traffic to make the, the right out on to 32 from that intersection and theoretically you could actually shoot across because they're going to be aligned up with Oakland if you wanted to. We know, just living here, that everybody tries to make those lefts from 32 into the, the buildings that are there. Um, while there's not a high rate of accidents, there's still enough accidents and in the morning, it's always fun trying to get past the mobile on 32.
Correct.
Would the DOT be admissible or can we talk to him about some sort of a traffic calming method, maybe a delineator or something that stops you from making that left on 32 or shooting across or shooting from the hotel and trying to go into Oakland that way?
Yeah, I think as part of the final design, you know, that could be worked into this. Um, you know, the, the, the concept that the DOT, you know, uh, approved was so that traffic coming from the north would be directed to turn up to Turner Road, so, you know, the no left into the connector road is, is relatively easy, you may have some vehicle that misses it, but I, I think at the end of the day, that's easy. The control of the other movements could be worked into the final design and part of that really would go away if it did meet the warrant.
Yeah, I mean, it would be.
That's one of the reasons why we're recommending to make sure we have an easement to mobile because if something happens with that property or the one behind it, that may trigger the warrants for DOT to allow the signal to go in there, which takes care of all the other issues and, you know, the left turn southbound would still be restricted at this intersection, but it would also better accommodate pedestrians with the signal.
Mm-hmm.
And it would help with some of the other issues and it may even clean up what happens in front of mobile or at least we would be in a position to, to better control what mobile would do if some of their traffic was able to get out of this roadway.
Yeah, because I think that's one of my big concerns right now is that, because people just. It is and you don't even know, we still, still don't know, we had the beer world that went away, so we, that's a, we don't know, we don't know what's going over there.
And you got that parcel in between the martial arts and.
You got, it's the hill, the curve and I just, I feel like it's a comedy of errors that people are just going to miss that.
If DOT does eventually approve a signal there, I mean, this is more on a reality, at whose cost is that?
I'm sorry?
At whose cost, what's fault?
Well, one of my recommendations in my letter is to get some fair, fair contributions from the different applicants that are here, um, but if it meets warrants and it's, you know, the other question is, you know, Oakland is a municipal street, okay? So if it meets warrants, DOT can be involved with the installation. This connector road is going to be a municipal road or I'm, I'm not sure what the. Private, private driver.
Private driver, so therefore the DOT would look towards applicants to fund most of it, okay? Um, in this particular case, I think there are several applicants and, you know, we're enough in this process where there may be some input from DOT, they may supply the poles, so the, the idea is that no cost to the build at the end of that.
Okay, like, questions, comments, concerns for Phil? No, good, okay. Anything else, I mean, you got a little bit of homework to do.
Yeah, we will get the revised EAF done and then we'll start on the draft. If we could, um, who's, who will give us the answer on the zoning, because I'd like to just put that issue.
Uh, you.
Work on that with Natalie and Mike, I will get you an answer, but we have to do some research on it.
And they also owe you the opinion from Mike for the setbacks, right?
I'll forward that to the applicant, yep, and to the board.
Okay, any else?
I don't have any questions.
And you're going to do your referral presentation?
Sure.
I apologize, just procedurally, um, a, as we were discussing this tonight, obviously this project has been around for a long time, um, so I think we're just trying to, we understand our next steps, but, um, so if we can get the revised FEAF part one and the plans to the board and the consultants, um, and then the next time we appear, would we be in a position to have, uh, the FEF part two adopted as well as having a secret determination so that we could move forward, uh, with the, with the process? We're just trying to figure out the best way to keep this.
Yeah, we could most likely do that.
Okay.
Unless there's glaring discrepancy.
Of course, uh, but we, we've heard all the comments this, this evening and, and we'll intend to address them, obviously, um, we anticipate the process will go on and so we'll, we'll be addressing them for a period of time, but just for the purposes of the FEF part one, we'll, we'll revise that and get that too.
Yep. You're welcome. All right, um, I do have to, I'll make a motion to refer the plans to ESO.
Second.
Any questions, all in favor?
Aye.
So we'll get their feedback as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item, you're over here. Stein Vanderbilt ARB, review and discuss documents submitted for ARB and Ridge Preservation, uh, proposed renovations in additions to include conversion of a garage to living space, deck and pool enclosure. Said property is located at 21 Vanderbilt Drive in Highland Mills and is known as the Village of Woodbury Tax Maps, section 245 block one, lot 102. Good evening, sir.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Yitzhak Stein, Isaac Stein with Ideal Design, uh, came for 21 Vanderbilt. Um, the project is, uh, they want to do, uh, they did, um, they want to do a, a pool enclosure around the existing pool and some interior renovations including, uh, fixing up the garage to include it in the livable space and, uh, a deck expansion.
I know you have a bunch of questions, but let's do Natalie and then we'll, we'll go for Natalie.
Um, this application has been before the board several times, previously Seeker was concluded declaring this a type two action, a decision on public hearing remains to be, uh, decided, uh, whether it will be held or waived. We noted there are mi- minor plan changes required, uh, within our memo, but also, uh, there is a question on whether or not the proposal complies with the coverage requirements of the zone. Uh, the applicant did provide a site plan per our prior requests, a bulk table still remains to be provided. Uh, the table should list what is required of the zone, the existing condition and the proposed condition. Uh, we noted in our memo that based on the information provided by the applicant, we agree that the pool enclosure does not increase the coverage on the site, but that the decking may, uh, so we've asked for a photo of the rear of the home and its existing condition to see, um, you know, whether or not there is basically an increase of the impervious coverage proposed, uh, along with that bulk table to confirm compliance. Uh, the applicant provided information on neighboring homes within 300 feet of the subject property, the information includes photos with areas associated with each of those homes, uh, just for the board's reference, the proposed home after the garage conversion to livable space is 20 to 70% larger, uh, than the comparable homes provided. With respect to Ridge Preservation, the applicant provided a photo from the view corridor facing the subject property, we recommend you review that and confirm if it is satisfactory for you to make a finding on visibility. And then lastly, a photo of the existing home was provided, the applicant has confirmed their intent to match the existing colors of the home, uh, which appear to be white and blue, as you know, white is typically prohibited under the code for Ridge Preservation, uh, but the code does allow the planning board discretion to waive this, A, if the property is not visible from the view corridor or where materials are associated with originally approved structures. So that's all I have, I think the big thing for us right now is whether or not the coverage would comply with the zoning.
Questions for Natalie? Go ahead, sir.
Okay, I live in, uh, Island Lake Estates and, uh, I feel I could be in part of interviewing the application and making a determination, so I have a couple of things, um, mostly on the ARBs, uh, the, uh, expansion of the deck in the front and back, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
According to the plan?
Yes.
Now, are you putting in a new deck or, because the deck there looks new in the back and in the front, so I'm trying to understand, when you say you're putting in a new deck, what are you actually doing?
Yeah, I, I'm not exactly sure, I know we did the plans and I'm not exactly sure if they did it already. I think, uh, we discussed already that it's built, I think the front deck is already done, so, uh, yeah.
But you are.
I, I actually did a visit of property, so.
Are you putting a cover on the deck? This is the picture that was submitted?
This is, this is the proposed, yes.
Putting a, uh, cover.
Yes, covered porch, yes, continue the covering, yes.
And if I recall, the garage is going to be living space and, uh, both the porch and living space, it's similar to the house that we approved two houses down, so, you know, it's nice and it's very similar.
Mm-hmm, mm, yeah, we tried this.
The accessory structure, I'm curious why you're putting, uh, on top of a pool when there are seven other indoor, in-ground pools, in fact, two across the street, uh, and they have a very decorative fence, you know, that meets code, so why would, and your house is on a corner lot, so the pool, you know, if you look at the picture, the pool is very visible from the main room.
I think, I think that answers the question, it's my understanding that the customer, since it's, it's on a corner lot and it's very visible, this is why he wants to enclose it for religious purposes, to, to, uh, to be the woman to be able to swim and it shouldn't interfere with the, you know, religious codes, uh, but.
Yeah, like I said, the porch and the dining, it's very similar, but the, uh, adding it as an accessory is very dissimilar to the other in-ground pools in the immediate area, so that's why it's, okay.
Yeah.
I'm just, and I, I see what you're saying about it being dissimilar with, but I remember a few years ago, they had a big tarp or something up that was covering the pool on that corner over there.
They have a, it currently have a flat top on top of the pool.
No, 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 when you came around the corner, they had a tarp so you couldn't see into the backyard over there on that.
Oh, where the fence is?
Where the fence is.
I don't remember, I remember the fence is still there.
No, 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 but I just think the way this, this house is set up, when you come around that bend, you can kind of see over that fence into the backyard and.
It's very exposed.
Yeah.
It's very exposed.
My brother-in-law used to live down the block, so I'm familiar with the, the area and that's why I remember that there was like, um, a canopy or a tarp or something that had got strung up because I understand the modesty issues, um, so while I understand it's bigger and it's going to make the house look much bigger, you got to pick your poison, right?
I agree with that.
Is it a six foot, then it would be what, a six foot solid vinyl fence or something that would end up having to go there or?
Enough to oppose the, uh, enclosure.
Or a big vinyl or green tarp.
Green, yeah, or the green slatted.
You know, here, again, I, I get the size of it, but it's not really increasing the living space, the pool is already there, so it's, it's not like they can put anything else there.
Yeah.
Um, they're making it look like the house, so it doesn't look.
Dissimilar.
Dissimilar as far as construction, colors, tones, um, so I understand what Rich is saying, I get it's, it's going to look massive, but then when you look at it, when the other way, what's going to look worse, a, a big white vinyl fence that says, hey, look, we're trying to hide something back here.
Or the enclosure.
Or, or an enclosure that looks like the home, that just looks like an extension off the rear of the home.
Part of this application is just covering the deck here, correct?
Yeah, and I think a bunch of the houses up in that neighborhood have.
Yeah, they're all.
They all have covered porches and stuff like that, right?
Yeah.
That's not uncommon up there.
It's very common.
But was that a deck proved, I mean, yeah, because we're just saying that deck was installed.
Yeah, it's done already.
Is that an approved structure?
Well, they would have to, the building department would have to.
That's not going to do with this application.
I mean, if, in order for them, they would have to make sure there's a CO and a permit for that before they can put, it's like if they put the covering on, they're going to have to go out and inspect the covering, the, the deck itself and then if there's something wrong with the deck, then they'll.
It's already, the, the new deck is already in and the post is just waiting for the top, that's why I asked, are we just talking about putting the top on the porch or putting in a whole new deck? So it's already there, the new deck, which, no, to me, it still looks nice, I was just curious why you were putting in a new deck when there's already a new deck there, but you're saying you're just going to put in a.
They want to do the cover, right?
Cover, yeah, okay.
Continuing the cover.
So I think the, let's, all right, let's take, let's a couple of different.
Go one, yeah, go one by one.
Couple of different pieces of the application, right? You got the cover on the front, of front of the house, the, which is similar to.
I'm okay with that.
With the rest of the neighborhoods, I don't think that's, I don't think that's a big issue.
Okay.
Then you have the rear deck, right? And then that's where we run into the threshold issue, right? Natalie?
Right.
The potential that we're over on coverage.
Correct.
Let's say we're not over on coverage.
That would not impose.
How do people, what does everybody feel about the rear deck?
I actually, I actually got a, a, a different, I didn't send that in, but I, I got a, a, uh, um, um, how's it called, bulk table from the engineer, but he basically figures everything like existing, I don't know why, he went to visit the property and he feels like that we're not extending anything. So, again, personally, I'm also confused with the deck, what is existing, what is, what is, what is existing?
Is there an existing deck there that's being replaced?
There, there was an existing deck some, somehow, but, uh.
Now, the question with that was if the person that put the deck can actually get a permit for it and.
Exactly.
So this is where you may, we may run into a conundrum, right? So we're, they're going to have to go within the building department, what was approved as far as coverage goes. Now, if the deck was there and it was in the coverage and I think, again, I can't comment on it because you have to research it, but we may be okay. If the deck wasn't there and someone added the deck and didn't, then we may either have to take the deck out or you have to go get yourself a, a variance for coverage.
Yeah. Question is if that's part of the application or that's for the building department to determine?
Well, well, being you're asking this board to approve that part of the application, we can't approve an application that's not in compliance, so if you're showing that deck on your drawings and we sign off on that, we're saying, yes, it's okay for you to have that deck and for you to put whatever you want on there, we can't, you know, you know, we can't give you okay to put something that's not allowed to be there. Did I make any, did I make any sense in that statement there? We can't say okay to something that doesn't, isn't legally allowed to be there.
Right, and all the plans, I think, to date have indicated that this, those decks are proposed new, so.
So we'll double, you'll double check with Mike and then we'll figure out the, the coverage, so I want to just go, let's just say there's not a variance threshold issue here.
Then I have no problem.
Okay. Sir?
And then the other question I have is on, on this rendering you gave us, um, the current picture, that beautiful landscape in the front with a maple tree and vines, is that sand or gold or that beautiful landscape?
So it doesn't, doesn't interfere with the, with the, with the deck, with the, with the roof on the deck? So since the deck is already there, that, that's basically shows that it didn't, it wasn't in the way, I guess.
Okay, well, I'm just referring to the picture you submitted, no landscape.
I, I saw that, I saw that.
And now it has beautiful landscape, that's why.
Where is this, oh, that's in the back?
No, the front.
The front corner.
The front of the house.
On the, and that's on the curve, right? By the curve?
No, that's the front of the, that's to the, we're looking at the house on the right.
Right side, okay.
So all the landscaping got there, so I guess it didn't, it didn't interfere, so.
So that would be a condition if the, if it gets approved, that the land, no, you're not going to remove anything.
No land, yeah, yeah, makes sense, they don't want to, they don't want to remove it, yes.
Okay, um, can we, can we ask you one silly question? There's a driveway, a walkway, a sidewalk that magically appeared going from the front of this house to the neighbor's driveway.
There was what?
A dri- a sidewalk. What's up with that?
It, it recently was put in.
Really?
Yeah.
No idea.
It's going to the other.
It goes to the other driveway. No idea, huh?
No idea.
Maybe we can ask, find out what there, because it's not on any of the plans that you.
Yeah, what is it, what is it, is it, is it, is it a problem for the?
Well, because what's going to happen is, is if, again, if your project gets appro- approved, the building inspector is going to take the plans we have, he's going to go out there and say, well, this is what the ARB planning board approved, now all of a sudden there's Now all of a sudden, there's a sidewalk, that's not on anybody's, that's not on any of your drawings, any of the rendering that gave us. So one, he's gonna either make you take it out, make you come back to us, and re-approve the driveway, so let's just kind of nip that in the bud before it gets to that.
Make sure it's easy.
Yeah, and then again, if you, if, if you built the sidewalk onto your neighbor's...
Can, can you show me where it is?
Right here.
If you're looking at the front of the house, it's on the left-hand side, it goes from the left-hand side of the property to the neighbor's driveway.
Hit, the other house, this is the other house driveway. So you're looking at the house, it's on the left side.
To the front and the right.
It's on the left side.
Oh, and we were proposing a door over there, and he made a door over there?
Yeah, it's already there.
It's, there, there's a door over there?
Yeah, it's already there, but the sidewalk is there.
To the neighbor's driveway, which is a little weird.
And it's not allowed.
I mean, I like my neigh, I like my neighbors too, but I don't know if I'd want to put a, I don't know if I want a sidewalk going to their driveway, I mean, I would like, you know. So we gotta kind of figure out what's going on with that.
Uh-huh.
You know, is that...
So is there, is there an approval needed for this sidewalk?
Well, if you're, if it's, if it's in the neighbor's property, which I'm pretty sure it is, you would need an ease, at the very least, an easement, in order to put a, your sidewalk in the neighbor's property.
And I think what Chris was saying also is, if, if it is legal already, make sure it's on your drawings.
Make sure it's on the drawings. Because it's not on, it's not reflected on any of the drawings right now. So the building department will go out there, they're gonna look at this and go, where'd this come from?
Yeah, and I really should just let Kelly speak on this, because this becomes more of a legal thing, I think, than anything else. But for encroachments onto other properties, you know, the board has typically in the past included a condition that, you know, you are not approving those encroachments, so if the building inspector found any issue with that, the applicant would have to deal with the building department, and it absolves the planning board from any liability.
Well, I step out for two minutes.
We're talking about this...
The whole time was about you.
We're talking about, there's a mysterious sidewalk that appeared from this, from the, this subject property to the neighbor's driveway. So we're just trying to get that squared away before...
Well, that's interesting.
Right.
Okay, I made a note.
I'm gonna need to look into that a bit further. So, people usually say we don't want to install the sidewalks, so this is...
Well, we were joking, saying, I like my neighbors, but I don't know if I'd want to build a sidewalk to my neighbor's driveway.
Yeah, it's not like a sidewalk along the road.
It goes to the neighbor's house, it's not going out to the street. It goes, this is driveway to the next house. This is not their driveway, it goes to the house next door.
Could you email me that photo?
Yeah.
This is interesting, I'm gonna have to look into this.
Yeah.
Do they really get along, maybe?
That's what I'm saying, I mean, what happens when the neighbors change, you don't like your neighbors anymore?
Yeah.
Maybe it's relatives, I don't know, I'll check it out.
We gotta, we, we just, we gotta get to the, it's, it's there, it's on the property, in front of us, unfortunately, we gotta figure out what the heck's going on.
It'll save you a little bit of headache down the road, once the CLs are issued if they're issued.
So, so you want to see this on the site plan? Is that something?
It, that, that depends, I mean, if that's something that's, comes back to, was it approved, did anybody know about it, is it covered, is coverage, sorry, not coverage, is coverage...
Easements, because now we're in the neighbor's.
Ease, well, if the, the neighbor is aware of it, is there an easement, what's happening here? There's, it becomes more complicated if it was just a sidewalk along the front of the property, that, again, is where I say most people don't even want to do that, but now we're installing it to a driveway, it's almost like a...
Sidewalk to the left.
Yeah, well, when you stepped out, we're trying to say, because we know it's there, when the building department goes out, we don't want them all of a sudden going, what's that?
I mean, I'd be really creeped out if my neighbor put a sidewalk on my driveway, but we'll have to look into this, and I'll talk to my guy.
Okay. All right, so we talked about the decks, right, I talked about the covers on the decks.
Garage?
The garage. Living space, because it's just a larger family, we need more room, or what are we looking at?
Correct, correct, they're basically, they're doing the dining room in the, in the garage area, standing there.
How many more bedrooms are being added?
I'll be very honest, those plans were made one and a half years ago, I don't remember.
I, I don't understand how you don't have every single application in front of you memorized, I, I don't get it.
No, I was coming to, to talk about the, the pool enclosure, I just didn't, I didn't...
Oh, come on, you've been in front of us before, we know, you know we're gonna, we're gonna go over everything you give us. I don't see...
I don't think...
There's a deck, new dining room.
No, it's, everything is existing.
Right, but the new, is it the...
They're expanding the master, and the master suite.
Right, is the garage, looks like it becomes the new dining room.
Yeah, the garage is the new dining room.
On the first floor?
Yeah.
And then on the second floor?
Expanding the, the, the master suite.
Okay, so they're putting, look, they're, they're doing a, a new walk-in closet, a new bath, so there's a sitting room, so they're taking the bed, master bedroom that's over the garage already.
Okay.
And then they're gonna take that real estate and make it a walk-in closet and a, a master.
All right, so no, no added beds?
It doesn't look like there's any added bedrooms.
No, bedrooms added, no.
Everything's existing, open to below.
The operation says there's no added bedrooms.
Right, so, good, that's good, no, the, the drawings, go with that. All right, so...
Then I got my wish with the garage myself.
Okay. Now we gotta talk about, we gotta talk about the big pool enclosure.
I'm okay with this, I, I think, like you said, where they had to put up a six, eight-foot fence there, or...
Could you put it up an eight-foot fence, you need a variance.
Yeah.
It's not like it's usable, I mean, the space is already taken by the pool, right?
Yeah.
And I get yours, I get your, what you're saying, right, because it's on the corner, it's visible, it's big.
As we've asked other applicants, can we get a picture, the existing house, the exi, I know they got the red thing.
Same to you, buddy.
I don't know. Can we get, you know, a rendering of the enclosure?
It's right here.
Oh, this is, this is gonna be right here?
This is it here. So it's...
I've got a wish for that.
Single-story, it looks like the pitch will make the...
Same coloring, same everything.
Same, same everything.
I have the, I have the wish myself.
All right. I know we're, we're missing a full board, so, but we can't even take a full time anyway, but we don't have Evan's feedback. But it does boil down to, we're at the point, other than the coverage issue, that needs to be figured out, and the mysterious dri, mysterious sidewalk.
I think they are, they are expanding the, the rear deck.
Right.
So, yeah.
I think we need to find out what deck, if any, was approved, and figure out the expansion.
Right, well, I'm...
Dig a little bit on this one.
No, I know there's like two things we have to figure out as far as coverage goes, and what was there and what wasn't there, I'm just, at this point, I'm just trying, architecturally, how it looks, like, let's...
If everything was...
If everything was okay with, with our research, how do we feel so we don't keep...
Oh, I need to be honest, okay.
Yeah, because we, we've kind of, this application's kind of cycling for a little bit.
Like I said, I'm, I'm okay the way it looks.
And it's not the biggest house.
I think it's a lot better looking if it's...
I think, I think, that's, that's my argument there, I think it's better than a fence or some sort of tarp, or something else going up there. And then it's gotta be maintained, and listen, if they want to use the pool all year round, God bless them, I'd like to see your electrical. Public hearing.
And the client, they know, but only because of the size of that?
I, I think you should have, because there are people who live across the street that, you know, I don't know how they're gonna feel.
Yeah, it's a big structure, begin, I, I say yes.
Okay.
And then there are other people right across the street that have in-ground pools, the same thing.
They're gonna want it to.
Okay, then we can do that.
Yeah, let's, uh...
All right, so, I'll...
The president of the board suggests that I...
All right, so I'll offer a motion to schedule a public hearing for our next planning board meeting.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I think there's, there's three, two things to hear play, right? We'll have the public hearing, or maybe, go ahead.
It's July 5th, I just want to make sure that you're gonna have a call.
I, I'm not going anywhere till the following week, is, anybody else not gonna be here on the 5th?
I will be here.
I'll be on the 5th.
The 5th, you'll be here?
I'm here.
You're here? What? That's it, we just gotta shut the whole place down then? Okay, so we'll have a call, we'll have a call for the 5th.
And is it good for the applicant, just because it's the 5th?
Got anything going on? Now, someone from your office can be here? Okay.
On July 5th?
July 5th.
I wanted to make sure, he didn't want you to show up and be like, oh, we've got to...
Do you think maybe we could figure out the threshold, we try to figure out the threshold issues before that...
Yeah.
Meeting? This way, we could potentially take action.
And move it along.
Yeah, it sounds like the applicant does have a plan with the bulk table, so that's the first part.
What am I missing? Oh, Kelly just gave me a strange look, then what did I miss?
No, you said, so you could potentially take action, and I said...
We could authorize a drafting of...
That was what I was asking.
That, no, we'll have, we, we'll, you guys can hopefully have the threshold issues figured out.
Public hearing?
Public hearing, then based on the outcome of the public hearing, we could then, if it's, however the board wants to, potentially authorize you to take action at that meeting.
I thought you meant you were gonna authorize me tonight to have drafted, and I was like...
No, 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 no.
You know which way to do it.
No, 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 I'm just trying to get the, the timeline all set up for the app, so the applicant understands still where, where we're at.
So most importantly, public hearing, July 5th, everybody will be there, and...
Yep, and then hopefully we'll have answers to the threshold issues, you'll do your homework on the mysterious sidewalk that showed up overnight, and, all right?
Now regarding the porch, what is it, what is it that we're, if, if it's not legal, and we cannot...
The, the, all right, so the rear deck is, we gotta see if it, if it's legal already, right, if there's an existing permit. If it's legal already, then I think we're okay as far as coverage, because we're not increasing.
He said they're expanding.
They're expanding, we would have to see the, the degree of deformity you're, you're going to go over. If it's, you know, if it's a five-foot deck, and you're making it 10 feet, are you going over on coverage at this point? That's what we gotta figure out. We need to figure out if you need a variance or not for the deck. Because if you need a variance, then you know where you gotta go, and you gotta get...
Right, so we need to go for a variance, and in the meantime, the pool enclosure is also on hold, or how, how does it work?
Well, you would have to take the, the, um, the deck off the drawing then, right?
You take the deck off the drawing, or you just deal with it all at once?
Well, I missed the second part.
Well, I said, or you just deal with it all at once, and you put the application on hold, go to the ZBI, and come back.
So those, those would be your two options. So I think you, you'll be in a better position once you hear back from us, whether or not you are over on coverage with that deck.
Well, the problem is, not to say it's a problem, you know, the, the deck aside, it's not clear right now what the existing coverage is, like, what, they have to provide that bulk table.
You said you have a bulk table, right?
Yes.
So can you forward that over to Natalie for us tomorrow, please, so she can look it over?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. And then we can look at, you know, whether it is an approved structure, how it's changing, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, and then just, you guys can, you know, if you need to work in the background to figure out coverage, just go ahead and do that.
Okay.
So by the time we come to the public hearing, hopefully we have answers.
Sounds good.
Although you interrupted your motion for the public hearing, so I have a motion, but I'm second.
Tommy's second.
I'll second, I second.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
Any que, Brian, we, we voted on it? Okay.
Oh, then I just was too busy trying to interrupt you.
I also have a question, one of the comments was that the plans are not clear somehow, would like to understand which, which portion of it?
What comment? I'm assuming you're referring to my memo.
I'm not, sorry.
I didn't write a memo, so...
So...
There was that, that there's lines, uh...
Um...
I, I shouldn't be able to, so...
We had asked for you to be consistent among the size of the pool enclosure, among materials, that was a plan revision, the coverage we needed to figure out.[1488.32]